Good evening, this is the Village of New Paltz Planning Board for April 21st, 2015. Thank you all, I'm sitting in for our Chair Maurice Whitman who's out of town today. So, we have three pre-applications tonight. One of them is a lot line revision, one's a subdivision, and the other is called a subdivision, but it's a pretty minor subdivision, could call it a lot line revision. We have a couple of other pieces of business to discuss, and minutes to approve from April 7th, and then just a couple of things about what we might want to do at our main meeting. Okay, so the first application is 34 Nolrock, if you guys would like to come up. Pull your chairs up, I guess would be the best thing. How are you?
Good, Michael.
It's been a long time.
I know.
Very long.
Little town, they still don't see D.O.
So, why don't you tell us what it is that you guys are doing with David?
So, yeah, so we lived at 44, we purchased the cat house at 36 if you remember.
Sure.
Years ago. And then when David purchased his house, she sold off a lot next door, and David and the two of us purchased it together.
Okay.
So, basically, we have houses on either side of that lot, so what we want to do at this point is just split the lot in half and add 25 feet to one piece of property and 25 to the other.
Right, so it's a 50-foot wide lot.
It's a 50-foot by about 120-deep.
Not buildable as it is, I mean barely buildable, right?
Barely buildable.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we don't want to build. I mean, we could, it wasn't the end of the world. That's not what we wanted to do.
Right, and your application is joint, so I assume you're speaking for David as well?
Right.
So he's fine with this? So...
So we've had drawings and actually already completed of everything.
Yeah.
Only two drawings, all he has to do at this point is split the two, you know, two drawings, separate them, and they also have the D. descriptions for the new lot, it's already done.
Okay.
I think I might have included that with it.
So I presume we'll need those for the full application, and then those are the things that the Chair can sign off on. Any comments, questions from you guys about this?
Should we go over to the simple?
Yes, and both, both lot owners on either side are co-applicants.
Yep.
We're co-owners of the property.
Yeah, and they are good on the application, so, and they're getting, couldn't be more rectangular this lot.
Yeah, we're supporting the open space.
So, as far as this, so you just need to...
I would just ask...
How do we need to do this in terms of a full application?
Yeah, that's actually a good question. I guess I would just ask, is there anything that you feel as a planning board needs to be added to the application or to the plan itself? In your packet, there's a site plan checklist, so I don't know if you feel like any of those items on there need to be on this, or if you feel like this is, we can call this complete now, so...
Yeah. Any comments about that?
I, because it's just of splitting the lot, I don't, they're not building anything, I would say make it as, you know, keep it simple and that's it.
Yeah, complete as possible, yeah.
So, if you have these, the final, what the final plans will look like, you said these are already drawn up?
I just have to give him the go-ahead and then he'll split that in half and give us two surveys, one for each property.
Two new D. descriptions.
I have the D. descriptions already.
So, yeah, so the final, the D. descriptions, the final versions of the map would look like after the lot line is done.
Okay.
You can submit those to Brogan.
So you'll have one, two surveys?
Yep.
One for each parcel, including the new 25 feet.
Right, exactly. And then that lot will be eliminated from there. I think that's all we need, I think by law we have to set a public hearing.
I believe so.
I think, I think we don't have a choice, but since we don't have a formal application, I don't know that we can set that tonight. So when you get your application, so what it means is this is basically going to take a month, but I don't see any problems.
After, yeah, we're going away for the whole month of May, we're not going to be back until sometime the first week of June, but David will be here.
But if you're here, that's fine, you're both applicants, so that would be, as long as one of you is here.
I have a question.
Yes?
We have to submit another application with the new...
You don't have to submit another application, you need to submit the rest of the documents.
Just the documents.
Okay, great.
And then we'll establish an escrow for your application with the attorney, so he could review it.
Yeah, although you should get most of that back.
Yeah, it's gonna be the rule.
It's very easy.
Right, I paid somebody upfront already.
You paid the hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, because they didn't know what to charge on that, so...
They didn't know what to charge, okay.
No, basically it didn't fit any of the descriptions.
Because...
There were two people looking at it, it didn't fit any of the descriptions of what they had.
All right, well, we'll try to sort that out.
So they figured that you guys would do that.
It's not a usual thing for us.
Yeah.
Because lot line...
You'll get the opposite, people will get some trouble.
I know, people will have done it, but...
So, we'll sort that out, you, the, there will be, Brogan can give you all the information you need in terms of, and the escrows is literally, it's an escrow, you put some money in, you'll get your money back, we're just processing it.
So, when would we know that by, the escrow and everything else?
You could talk with Brogan tomorrow if you want to deal that, if you have, as soon as you give your, your land person the...
Well, we'll call him tomorrow, I can have, we're leaving next week, so...
You can have it, you'll deal directly with Brogan?
Send the directive to you.
Yeah.
Do you need stamped copies?
And that's what he'll, yes, the Chair will need to approve those.
Okay, okay, and then he could also send you the, the...
PDFs of those.
Who's going to work?
Okay, I don't even know.
James Association?
James, James, yeah.
William James?
William James.
Okay.
He's really great to work with.
Good.
Very inexpensive.
As soon as we get your documents, what we typically do is shoot, shoot it over to the attorney and then he gives us a quote, and then that's how we establish the escrow. So it can literally be done the day of, like the day you submit your documents, just call up the attorney and we'll get the number and you can sign it on there.
Let me turn that around fast, and...
Yeah. Do we meet over the summer?
Oh, yeah, 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 but, I mean, we can have this done for you. So if you get these into us, we'll...
What, the school taxes coming out?
You get these into us, we'll be able to put you, can we put them on the next meeting? I know officially it's...
It's, it's up to the Board really, typically it's two weeks window.
We say two weeks.
But if you feel as though this isn't a substantial change, then you could choose to review the application for completeness on, when is that, May 5th?
I mean, it's up to you all, we can, if you're not in a hurry.
No, I don't know.
I guess more than anything else, I want to make sure that, I just don't want to go into the next tax thing with the school taxes as well.
Well, just to make sure that he'll be able to do those drawings.
That should be very...
This won't change that.
Why?
Because the school taxes were based on the last assessment.
Right, so that'll be last year's.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't start at that point forward?
If your house burned down tomorrow, your school taxes would be the same.
Okay, so it's based, yeah, but the land won't exist anymore September.
I know, but like I said, if your house burned down, your school taxes would be the same. So if your house didn't exist anymore...
How about if the land doesn't exist anymore?
Well, land still does exist, but, you know.
So we just split it.
And so we don't want to tax lien against it because...
We'll just split it.
So, okay, so with that in mind, I guess you have two choices. We can decide tonight to, typically it's a two-week, we ask for two weeks between the time we get the documents for a full application and the time of our next meeting. We recognize this is very straightforward and simple, you're all in agreement, it's just these parties. So we could discuss shortening that if you get them in, you know, by the end of the week and stuff.
Right.
On the other hand, you aren't going to be here, so if there's no sense of urgency, we can put you on the agenda for the second meeting in May, we'll set the public hearing and the first meeting in June, we would have a public hearing.
More reading space. Would that work for you, David?
Yeah.
Okay?
We don't, yeah.
Okay, well, so...
That'll be the second we can... No, neither.
The second meeting in May would be the next time we would have you on the agenda.
What's the date for that?
May 19th.
May 19th.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we would set a public hearing then, which would be the first meeting in June, which would be...
The second, June 2nd?
June 2nd.
And they would have time to go to the county that way, too.
I don't know that it has to go to the county for this, I don't know that there's...
Oh, it doesn't?
I know, it's a residential road, I don't think there's anything that bears on that.
That's true.
And at the public hearing, unless there are grumps of your neighbors who come out and say, no way, you can't do this, we'll be able, we'll be able to prove it the same in the view, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, great.
Good, thanks, John.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I can give you, do you want to... Okay, so I'll email you tomorrow with more suggestions.
It goes along with 40.
Brogan, Brogan, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Chair's got all the information.
Heidi wants to be at the chair instead of your chair.
Oh, you want to?
No, no, my head, you can do it.
I'll just leave it. Save some energy. How you doing?
How you doing, Rich?
How you doing?
This is Mira in Dakota Village.
So, before we start, Rich, you'll need to recuse yourself, please.
I refuse myself.
Thank you, Chair.
It's official.
It's official, okay. So this is 181 Huguenot Street, the Jewett property. Do you want, I know Patty's not here tonight, you want me to, we all are somewhat familiar? Do you want me to explain this?
If you want to, I mean, I'm not really sure that all the information that you need, you have the application in front of you that she sent you.
Yep.
I know the one thing that we are trying to do is have a joint meeting of the Village Planning Board and the Town Planning Board to look at the application as one and have a joint public hearing, if we can do that.
We could do that.
I don't know if it streamlines it or not.
So, so why don't you just, for the purposes of the audience, why don't one of you explain just in a few sentences what it is that we're doing here?
We want to subdivide the 181 property into two portions, the back portion's about 90, 92 acres, and it's going to be all farmland and only agricultural buildings, no residential, and the front will have all the buildings, and the front parcel is 10 to 11 acres and is almost entirely in the village, with a little bit in the town. The back property is entirely in the town, well, there might be a little in the village.
Well, there has to be.
Teeny, yeah, teeny bit. And because there is no road that accesses the back property, we were asking to have a flag lot created that can be the access road off Huguenot Street to the back property, and that is in the village. And on the map, you'll see that that's on the northernmost part up against the Hasbrook property. And Mira in Dakota planned to farm vegetables and...
So the back, so the back property would be owned and under our management as row-by-row farm, my wife and I are the co-owner and operators, and it would be a mixed organic vegetable and chicken business that we would run back there, and, yeah, did you want to add to that?
No, I don't. Okay, so, John or Liz, any comments or questions?
No, I think, I think it's just one of those deals where I, I think it would be the expedient way is to do a joint town and village planning board meeting and that leaving, so then you end up with just the one public hearing and everybody can catch all at the same time. I don't, I don't think there would be too many people worried, you know...
Vegetables.
That, that, right, that, right.
I'd hope not.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
I mean, this is essentially the same thing, we came before you, 2008, I think.
Yep. Anything, John?
No, it's all pretty clear.
So, I have a couple of questions and a comment after speaking to our attorney today. Is this, is this the, it's not clear to me, is this the map that you're submitting for the subdivision? Is this current?
That's Patty has, Patty has answered that.
Okay, so this is a pre-application, which means that you'll need to make sure that whatever you submit is the...
Actual.
Is the actual map that is stamped by her that will, you know, be considered for approval. So, this is, this is stamped sketch, so this is not, even if this is correct, it's not going to be...
It's not the official one yet.
It's not going to be the official one that's needed in order to consider this for Other than that, the conservation easement, which is included in our packet, is, I apologize because I did not read the whole thing. I know, I know. Anyway, the, the conservation easement is on the entire acreage, right?
Yes.
So both, if, if it is subdivided, both pieces will still be subjected to the same...
Subjected, and there are some amendments that are going on right now, we're waiting for the letter from the land trust.
And can you tell us what those are at this point?
Yeah, generally the amendments are, in the easement, there's a stipulation that there's 6,000 square feet of ag buildings that could be built.
Okay.
And all of that 6,000 square foot footprint is going to the back.
I see.
To their farm.
So restrict what could be done on the front.
Yeah, and there's some changes that allow solar energy, for us to use solar energy on both parcels, and...
You need some, like, ground collectors, things like that?
For us to put it on the barn on the front parcel, if they put panels or different things, just, it's going to be the way of the future, so...
Sure.
And the walking land trust is, wants a right-of-way for a walking path along the river.
Okay.
And so that would be in there, and...
Do you want, is that the kind of thing you might want to, that's, that should be on the, on the final?
It will be on the final, it will be on the final thing.
And the basic, the, the essential change to the easement is that it's allowing for the subdivision, because right now it restricts any subdivision.
Of course, okay, fair enough.
So I know there's another thing on this.
So there's another, so another thing is that the, the wetlands on the property that comprised of about 22 to 25 acres will be, hopefully, or we're in the process of making some sort of swap with the NIQIS so that it would be under the NIQIS higher court management.
Okay.
And that the little bit of acreage that the NIQIS owns and manages, we would then manage and grow vegetables on it.
It won't be part of the easement, there'll be a letter that they signed with that they'll endeavoring to make that happen.
Okay, right, this is something that's been attempted for a while now.
It's a separate, yeah, and it's, it's separate, but they're making, and they're in negotiations right now to do that.
Okay, so, but that will impact the final subdivision map?
Well...
No?
No, because it's not part of the deal, it's, I...
No, but what you're showing as your land...
Will be our land.
Will still be your land.
If this swap happens, it's going to be after the fact.
Yeah.
It will not be during this.
You'll have to come back.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
It should be in the town, it shouldn't be in the...
That's true, it won't involve us.
Yes.
Is the, that's true for the sanctuary part, too?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
There's some little bits.
There really only changes affecting the village would be the solar collectors.
Yeah, and that's fine, once those, when, when that happens, we can deal with that, that, that's fine, you don't need to put that on here, because those are not permitted structures at this point. Okay, so, the other thing that I wanted to say in terms of the process is, so I spoke to our attorney today, and what he explained, which I didn't fully appreciate, was that although you need to come to the Village Planning Board and the Town Planning Board because the subdivision includes lands in both, we only have authority to consider the part that's in the village. However, what we are actually voting on, as well as what the town is voting on, is the entire subdivision map that you create. So, with that in mind, we don't get into this catch-22 where if the village approves the subdivision and the town doesn't, that there's this unbuildable lot, because we're actually approving the entire subdivision. And by, and by the same token, if the town approves it, and for some reason we don't, it's not as if the town has approved something that they can never access, they can, in other words, we could both do this separately if, if we chose to. I still agree with Liz that doing it in, together is, saves you a public hearing and...
Time.
And some time, perhaps, we just have to figure out when we can all meet. So, there is that other wrinkle, though, however, that the town's EBA has to do their thing in order for the Town Planning Board to do their thing, so...
And Patty has asked for the town to be the lead agency.
Right, yeah, and so we're aware of that, there's nothing that we need to do unless somebody has an objection to the town being the lead agency, that, fine, so, we can allow them to do seeker. So, at this point then, what you need to do is complete the application by submitting a final stamped subdivision plat that we can consider, the town will need to have the same documents. I don't see anything else in here, I guess the only other issue that I can think of that we should consider is, it is a subdivision, arguably there is a rec fee, and I would like to hear what you all think about that, I have an opinion, but I'll wait to hear.
I have to say I'm unfamiliar with the rec fees and how they're applied, so...
So, the way the code is written is that if a subdivision occurs, and it's written with an actual residential subdivision plan in mind, if a subdivision occurs, the subdivision is required to provide a sufficient amount of recreational space in the form of whatever, playgrounds or tennis courts or something like that, to service their new residents.
But that sounds as though it's designed for a subdivision where they've taken, for example, 100 acres and chopped it up and...
Yep, that's exactly.
Yeah, and that, to me, that doesn't really apply.
Yeah, they're not doing that, so I don't see how it would apply.
Okay.
Unless, I mean, this is an existing house.
Right.
There's not adding any, any residences there.
Right, we're not adding any tenants or...
Right, and as far as I know, you're not adding any residences on here.
No.
So...
So, we, we can check the code before we actually have a, while the formal application is in process, I, I don't know if the words are shall or may and what our discretion is, but in lieu of, in a typical subdivision, in lieu of some developer or applicant providing necessary recreational elements, we are entitled to ask for money in lieu of that in order to offset the cost of having to provide recreation townwide. I agree with you all, I don't think there's a need for this, but I think we'll have to take a formal position to waive that.
And the chickens won't be needing any recreational, you know? They have, plenty still have their own.
With the right-of-way hanging out of recreation.
With the right-of-way along the river?
Is that, that's recreational space, it's walking.
Also, it's not colored.
I'm just going to put a toll out on you. Get out the money from it. I won't keep it, I'll just give it to you.
The point is that there's no residences could be built as a result of the subdivision, any more than the last application. We're not giving them back recreational one either, because they're taking a lot away.
Yeah, right, well, they're...
Oh, that's a good concept.
But, the question, you said it'd only be one EAF? The village won't have to do it if the town doesn't?
I have to check, I, I did not say that, I...
George seemed to think that we would be doing a seeker also.
Yes.
I got an email about that.
I think that we'll have to since we're getting an application, but it's, they'll need to fill out the, the EAF as part of the application.
Right, I am, they.
You will have to fill out this EAF as part of the application.
Yeah, because I don't know what an EFA is.
I thought, I thought I just had heard you say they don't need to do one, but my feeling is...
No, no, one public hearing.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
Never mind.
I just wanted to confirm that this Board was okay having a town as the agency, that's, that was the only question, no, no, one public hearing.
Yeah, because George says, in my opinion, the Village Board could do its own seeker, but he's not saying that we have to. There's a public opposition, the Simmons has already been approved, so I don't understand why we need, okay, so, all right.
Yeah, no, you should complete an EAF, it might be possible that we can handle the whole, all of the seeker at once if we're doing a joint application, a joint meeting, but we'll get confirmation for that in time, so...
Do we have to have two, a joint meeting and a joint hearing, or is it all in one?
You will probably have to have at least two more meetings with the planning boards of, one to confirm that you have a complete application, and then we'll set the public hearing there like we said with the previous people who were at the table, and then the second meeting would be where the public hearing is held, if everything is fine, then that would, we could take action that night.
So if you do a joint one, it's going to be a different night than Monday or Tuesday?
It would probably be, it would probably be at the town, it's possible, it's likely that it would be at the town Monday night when the Town Planning Board typically meets. And since they're the lead agency, most likely we do it where they are and set work with them.
We would just have to make sure that there's that 10-day window between the application for completeness for noticing the public hearing.
Okay.
So that might get a little tricky.
All right, so we'll have to, you can...
Yeah.
So, I'm not hearing any objections for doing it?
No.
Okay, so we will note that...
The 10-day thing is important.
Let's, and Maurice did say today, the Chair did say today, he's fine with doing this jointly.
Okay.
So, if you could communicate with Kelly and see if we can schedule a time for this? Well, we can't schedule a time yet, first we need to get the application.
Yes.
I know Patty is working on the list of circulation.
Okay.
Something, I think that's what donate the time, so, I know that Brooks is, they're working on that.
Okay, so, Mike, it'd be a good idea for her to contact Brogan sometime this week, tomorrow or by the, before the end of the week, and give her a sense of what, when she, we should expect documents, and then if it's possible, then you can communicate with Kelly and just confirm that everybody's getting the same stuff at the same time, and then we'll get you on the agendas.
Okay.
All right, does that seem all right? I know it's a little complicated for you all, but you can do two of them. Okay.
Keep the sun out.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, good.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys, too.
Yep. So I will call tomorrow and have her call you.
Okay, thank you. I could also reach out to her, I've, I've watched her before.
Well, I don't know where Patty and Sue are going to call you.
Okay, I'll be back to Sue.
Brogan, I'm back.
Rich is officially back, he signs up.
I'm back.
How are you all?
How you doing?
How you doing? So, this is 105 Huguenot Street, this is a very minor change to a, existing, to existing lots, why don't you tell us?
So we did a survey after we purchased the house for some work in the backyard that we never wound up doing, it was landscaping work that the Historic Preservation Commission, I believe, required.
Okay.
We ran that, it came to our attention that the neighbor's driveway and garage is built over the property line, I'm not sure how it was able, how that was able to happen or when that happened, but it predated our buying the house, you know? And as we've gone to sell the house, a potential buyer came to the Building Department because he wanted to do some addition on the house and saw the survey, and I guess their lawyer advised that it would be difficult for a bank to give them financing on this and because of the encroachment by the adjoining property. So we're here to try to get the lot line revised to the border, I guess, of the existing structures.
So, it looks like you're actually voluntarily giving up a small piece of your property.
I mean, what are the other options, right? I mean, you know, litigation and all that, I think we're kind of at this point just trying to sell the house as fast as possible, we lost our deal as a result of this on the place, so we're kind of just trying to move on here.
Okay, go ahead.
You both are owners of this property? And, kind of like the other people that were ahead of you, they had both people, in other words, where's the neighbor agreeing to this?
The neighbor has agreed through a kind of set of detailed emails with lawyers and such, first we tried to do an encroachment agreement, which basically says, so long as the structures stand, we all agree that this is sort of the deal, if you will, it's kind of a, a set of conditions that sort of basically say that, you know, as long as these, as long as these structures, you know, stand, we have consent to use portions of the driveway, sidewalk, porch and garage which encroach upon the property, but Ms. Quinn, the owner, has asked that, that we do, she wants, she's, she's looking for a lot line revision and has offered a thousand dollars towards, you know, costs with surveys and such to redoing that, so, that's what we're here to do, you know, the...
Do you have that in writing?
I do, yeah, I can forward that along if, if needed. Unfortunately, we don't really have that creative a working relationship.
Yeah, my concern is that you're the applicant, but I would kind of expect the neighbor to be a co-applicant to this.
Yeah, I think Brogan just asked us to come here and then we'd figure out what we need, so that's certainly something we would, we would provide, and we have all that, I'll get to, I'll get that to you immediately.
And I'm surprised that, in other things, I've seen what's known as an equal area swap, where, for example, the... Where, for example, the line, you draw the line straight and then the same amount of area. You give up this much and you get that much.
And so that would be, you know, whatever recommendations you have, I think part of, at least my point of view on this is, you know, looking for a direction. What is nor, we have no experience doing this.
That, that's just a suggestion on my part, not a recommendation.
Well, if they did area swaps, then they wouldn't need to sit before us, it would just, there would just be something that they're between a lawyer.
Not necessarily.
Well, it's, it would be effectively a lot line revision.
Either way, it's a lot line revision, right.
So although they, they end up with no net change.
In, in area, right.
In area, it would still be something that we would have to see and then approve.
But I would.
I'm a little confused.
Okay, I'm sorry, were you done?
No, I, I, I just would be a lot more comfortable if, if the other person or persons affected by that lot line change were also here at the same time.
Well, we'll see if that's. Go ahead.
The neighbor's garage is on your property?
Right.
But yet you have the problem.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I, I brought it to the building, I'm not sure why the, they were even allowed to build there. I'm not sure how we got here, but I, you know, here we are around the.
Well, it happens all the time, that's an old district.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think.
Old Peter Harp, Deed used to go with chains and links and the old oak tree and the old wagon, I remember.
That's very much what it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my sense in talking to the neighbor is that they purchased the house with all of these structures in place, and so, and at that point, she wasn't aware that there was a survey, or the survey wasn't required at the time, I guess, I, you know? But she didn't have one at her fingertips, and I think she even went up to the county recently and couldn't find one more recent than the one you've done. So, I, the situation is not that anybody who's currently involved with either property did anything at the time. And what's being referred to as a garage now is actually, I think, been converted to a.
Livable space.
Livable space as part of the building. So, so I guess the things that, if it is possible for you to complete the application with the cooperation of your, of the other party, that would be ideal, as Liz is suggesting. If not, documentation that indicates what it is that both parties have agreed to would be extremely helpful. Otherwise, I think what's likely to happen is that when the public hearing comes, we'll sort of, you know, then that stuff will get aired there and it would be much better if it was sorted out beforehand.
I don't know if that, I don't know.
No, I know Rich, Rich would tell you that.
Rich, do you want to come up and talk, is there anything you guys want to add to this?
Um, Amy's the one who needs to be.
Okay, so I know she couldn't be here tonight, so. So that's fine.
But what you, I can say this, is that you, you, you made an accurate point in that when she bought the house, which is close to twenty seven years ago, I think.
Right.
That's, that was, this garage.
Yep.
Is now a den, and the garage, when she bought it, was an attached, what I would call an attached garage. It was part of that building.
Right.
It was all one building.
And you haven't changed the footprint in any way?
No, I only turned the garage into a, into a den.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're right, she never knew, she never knew any of the stuff.
Yep.
I believe that.
Yeah, and when you all purchased, you didn't have it surveyed at that time, right?
No.
So you were unaware of this problem. When you purchased it and nobody raised it, no realtor, bank or anything registered, so.
No, but the problem we have here, Michael, is if we move this lot line, someone's gonna have to go to the ZBA, probably both properties. Because nobody's gonna meet sidelines.
Good point, yes.
No one's gonna get what?
Nobody's gonna meet the side.
There's no, there's gonna be the setback requirements for the side lots.
Not even close.
Yeah, right, because they're, these are built right up to the, to the lot line.
Over.
Or over, yes.
Even worse.
But I think that because it's a pre-existing condition due through no fault of anyone, and they're actually trying to fix the problem.
Yeah, but you still would end up.
Oh yeah, I think you still have to go through the drill, but.
That's why I wonder if something like this encroachment agreement might be a recommendation that, that can be given off. We're, you know, speed is, is what we're looking for, right?
So, the encouragement.
I think that's a George question.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if you want to leave us a copy of that, if you can, you can let our attorney look at it, because.
This doesn't affect us.
But this isn't gonna affect us at all, right?
No, and we don't get involved in that kind of legal advice.
Oh, that's true.
Okay. But.
Actually, there's no point in asking.
I can cite six or seven other examples of this around the village.
Right.
That I've been involved with over the years. Only because, even Magnetic North, believe it or not, has changed, hasn't it?
It changed.
Who's the science people? So surveying techniques have changed. I thought it didn't change, but that's.
No, it changed, it changed.
I'm a sesame seed, it's heated. So, I, you know, nobody has a legal problem here other than the fact that the house on the right here, Ms. Quinn's house, is encroaching on your land.
Right.
And basically what I've seen people do back and forth is give agreements back and forth called a license. You give her the rights to let her house stay there for as long as it exists. Now, if the house burned down, blew down, the bad wolf comes to the front door and takes it down like a house of sticks, she couldn't rebuild back in that land. But.
Isn't it, isn't, yeah, isn't that the case?
That's her attorney's issue with, with, with that idea. So we're here to explore what the options are, but I'd say, right now, our position, which you might be aware of, we can't rent the house and now we can't sell the house. So we're kind of in a bit of a, you know, we, we, we need to do something here, right, you know, and we're.
And you're broke, he's telling you he can't sell it with this, having this.
We lost, we lost one deal, we have another one that's contingent on this getting sorted. And we need something, whether it's an encroachment agreement or a lot line revision, that would allow a bank to see a survey that doesn't have encroachments on it or at least have a, have a story with some official, you know, something, right? Think of a Wells Fargo roundout, they're gonna want something that basically explains why that's, that is. An encroachment agreement, our attorney, Joe Canino, thinks, does a lot of these deals, says, thinks that would be fine.
Seems like that would be the easiest.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got the railroad coming through my property down here on Water Street with an easement, goes right through the house. It's an old, is, are they ever gonna rebuild the railroad? I don't think so.
Right.
But if they do, it comes through my eighteen forty eight farmhouse today on that. Mainly because today we have much more accurate surveying techniques than they had back then.
So what's the easiest way for these guys?
We don't give legal advice from here.
Yeah, no, we can't.
That's the problem. And I can't, you know, I'm always sitting here as a planning board, remember?
Yeah. I mean, if you guys can sort this out, I.
You got a very nice neighbor to work with.
If you can sort this out.
Too bad you guys aren't working together.
If you can sort it out without requiring this sort of action where you have to come in front of us and as Rich correctly points out, we'll probably have to then go to the ZBA, it, it's, it is time. As you have heard, we meet twice a month, the ZBA meets once a month, and so this is gonna take a few months, there's just no way around it.
It's a significant change in terms of the ZBA.
So, i- if you can work this out legally between the two parties and your attorneys, or between the two parties and then your attorneys, you'll, there's a chance you'll get it done, you know, in a timeframe that won't be as long. I can't tell you that for sure, but. If, so if you want to come back to us, I, what you will need to do is provide a, a map like what you have that we could approve. So you would need to ask your surveyor to provide a full map showing the, what the final lot line would look like. You would want to make sure that's in agreement with your, it would, it would be wise to make sure your neighbor who's being affected by this understands and agrees to it. We would, if you, I think you have a full application here as far as I know, I haven't reviewed it, every bit of it. Looks like you did the secret part from what I saw today. And, so we would then be able to determine this to be complete, we would, at that point, probably, or at, at what point would they go to the ZBA? Would they fill out a ZBA application?
They, they could very easily, the building inspectors get back from training next week. Mark and Rich are the two building inspectors, we'll probably talk to at least one of them.
Yep.
They would actually determine, or write a letter of denial, it's called, saying that the lot line revision would encroach on setbacks, and then that letter would be sent.
That triggers the ZBA, actually. Okay, so they would act, so you would actually.
They could be on the May, yeah.
Right, so you could be on the May, ZBA, and so that would come to us in May, we would render a meeting, and you'd go to the ZBA in May, and you'd come to us.
Because then you would wait to see what the ZBA says.
Right, so you'd come to us, either the end, second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. And then we would set a public hearing for the next meeting, so.
July, June, July.
Yeah, so we, we could complete the, our responsibilities probably late June, if all goes well, or first meeting in July.
The neighbor would also have to go before the ZBA, or the ZBA would have to take a joint application.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think a joint application would be.
I don't know if the ZBA can do a joint application.
Well, each, each variance gets its own application, so.
Right. But they could he, but you could presumably hear them at the same time.
Yeah.
Since it would impact both.
Right.
So, yeah, so then your neighbor.
But I mean, you have to dovetail those two together.
Your neighbor would have to come in and, and fill out an application, in their case, well.
What do we, what do we need for sideline requirements? Who's got the zoning up in front of them?
Oh.
Well, I think the side.
Side requirements?
I'm guessing it's probably fifteen.
Fifteen feet.
I'm guessing.
Twelve and a half or fifteen?
Either, either way.
Fifteen, yeah, it's fifteen. So I hit that in.
You don't have it, either of you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You only got twelve and a half to split.
Right.
So, you both need significant ZBA approvals.
So, you're saying, get a new survey, propose a survey with the new lines, file it, get an application, get on the ZBA and file with them? To get a variance or sort of?
You don't have to file anything, you just gotta get on the ZBA.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay. With the new survey?
Yeah, it's all within the village.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sir Chair. Is there any possibility that this, because of the age of both houses, that something is grandfathered? That would mean the owner is.
If they, I, I, my sense from what Rich is saying is that if no changes were made, yes, it's grandfathered. The problem is if they are coming.
No, that it was already grandfathered. If it was already grandfathered, would there still be decisions?
They're not in any violation of village code here, because they are grandfathered.
Right.
They're not, there's, there's no code violation.
Right.
Their problem comes more from a marketing problem.
No, I, I understand.
No, not even the bank.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So what do you?
What I'm, what I'm asking, I think, is, if there's no change to the property, then doesn't the grandfather clause remain in place? And they, there's no, I guess what I'm looking for is a way for the bank to be able to re-lot. I guess what the bank needs is something to rely on, that there's no question about who owns what.
Right.
So either through the title insurance that may already exist or something. If this condition is a grandfathered condition, then would you, and you did the lot line revision to allow the property to remain, you know, whatever, move the lot line up, or could that not somehow carry over for the variances?
The new lawyers.
That, yeah, I think that's not, I think, Rich, Rich's argument was, let me just see if I can address that. I mean, your, your point about the bank is well taken, that's great, it has nothing, unfortunately, that's out of our purview.
Right.
I think Rich's point is that when you create a new situation.
You undo.
You undo all of that. We now have, we have new, two new, we have two lots that now have a different line, and now the setbacks come into play.
Right, and I guess what I was wondering is, if the grandfather can come through rather than have to be dealt with.
Not, yeah, not a question.
Once they sell it, no.
Grandfather goes home when we create the new lines.
So the options are, they, so that we do an agreement between us, ourselves, that is.
Doesn't involve us, right.
Doesn't involve you as much, yeah, but that would give the, the banks some, something to work on.
Yep.
Option two is that we go through this thing. Option three is that they rectify the lot line to the existing plans, which, you know, which are not the like, but that is not, that would be a thing that would solve the problem too.
Rectify the. Have you talked to your title company?
No.
And I'll give you the free advice is, you really should talk to that title company.
Okay.
And find out what your title company's position is, your buyer's position, everybody else's position isn't necessarily your position. So find out what your team is telling you.
Okay.
So what your attorney, your title company is telling you that I'd look at first. As far as coming back here and working this with us, I think it is gonna be much more difficult than just a meeting or two.
Yep.
It's gonna be a much longer process. There are no legal problems with us.
No, it's like, but.
Like the ZBA's saying, you're grandfathered.
But the nature of the process, having to go to the ZBA, having to get your neighbor to go to the ZBA and then come back to us, it will take a couple of months at least. Now, I didn't understand the third one, I don't know if I need to exactly, but I understood your first two options.
Well, I mean, the, the, again, back to the point is, why is this our problem? I'm still not sure why I understand that. So let me talk to the, let me talk to the thing, but I mean, option three is that it looks like, well, that's our property and why is this, the house on it? I don't, you know, I hadn't claimed to own it, but now that I see that this is the property line.
Right, well, that, yeah.
That's between you and the title company.
Yeah, that would be.
So let me, let me talk to them, and again, it's, you know, we're, we're, speed is what we're looking for, not cause trouble.
If you want to do some things in parallel, you can pursue your options that are outside the planning board, per you. And at the same time, you can begin the application process. You know, so you can submit your full application, the building inspector next week can make a determination, and as Brogan said, you'll probably then be sent a letter of denial, which means you can trigger going to the ZBA. You'll do that application, you'll get on their agenda for May. So if you do that promptly, that's how that would work. And they meet when in May, the third?
The second, the second Tuesday, so May twelfth would be.
Okay, and they would need an application by when?
By April, wait, ah, one, one week, April twenty eighth.
Okay.
So, that gives.
With the revised surveys and everything.
No, actually, well, you could probably just submit this for the, for the first meeting.
For the first meeting.
Yeah.
But it would have to show the setbacks, so actually, in the, in the historic, historic side yard is twenty feet, so you would want it to show how, how much of the setback you need and how much space you have. Have that on the, on the diagram, and the, the building inspector would tell you everything that you need, so.
So you could begin, so you could begin that process while you're continuing to do the other stuff, that, that way you're doing them in parallel.
From what it sounds like, if the grandfather goes out the window, we have, it's a long shot of even getting this, this lot line approved.
The grandfathering doesn't, doesn't apply at all in this case.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no grandfathering here.
Right.
That almost seems like a fruitless effort, doesn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
There is no grandfathering here.
Yeah.
You're, you're allowed to have what you have here by the fact that it's been here this long.
But once we open up the.
You're not in violation.
Right.
Also, creating a new line is, is a new action.
I wouldn't make any presumptions about what the ZBA might do.
Okay.
So, I am certainly not our position to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what does happen in terms of us, just so you understand the process, is every action like this that goes to the ZBA, prior to their meeting, we will receive information about it, and it will be on our agenda, we'll determine whether we want to make the recommendation to the ZBA, which is not binding to them, it's not, but they consider the recommendations that they get and then they consider all of the information and evidence that they, and they render a decision based on that. So, our board, having spoken to you, is, understands the situation, and we would then, if we, if you go through that and we get that information, an indication, we'll, we'll make a recommendation of once, or, you know, we'll say what it is that we think as per this application, ZBA can consider that as well. So it, it would be, you should, you should consider this in light of, don't try to presume what a board will necessarily do. Consider what your options are and whether it's worth pursuing for the time and little bit of money that you might have to invest in taking these, this possibility, you know, this option. Consider whether that's worth it to you compared to the other options you have, and, and do all of the things that you need to do to give yourself the best opportunity.
The encroachment agreement seems like the no-brainer for both sides, but I, I think her concern was, like we said before, that if there was a fire, she wouldn't be able to rebuild it as is, right? But isn't that the case now? With this encroachment?
I just want the McLawyers for it.
Yeah, you'll need to, yeah, I don't, don't know, and, you know.
Yes, she is Jeffrey.
My sense is that, you know, you, you work that out and you get your attorneys together and figure out if you can come up with something that satisfies all parties, so. Sorry, I hope that was somewhat helpful.
No, there is.
We must.
All right, appreciate the times, and that's, that's a different, difficult situation.
All right, thank you guys.
If you have any questions about how we can help you, please contact Brogan, she'll do everything she can. Thank you guys for coming, good luck. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to do a public relation, so.
I just wanna do a public relation, so, you know, here.
Sure.
Just so that the general public and these two gentlemen think that this is a Budinsky who just started talking a new letter of talk, she's on the ZBA.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And therefore she had.
That's good.
Yes, this is, this lovely couple here, um, are our liaison to the planning board from Village Board, Tom Rocco, and Ellen Rocco is a member of our zoning board of appeals, so her comments and questions were quite relevant, thank you, so, all right.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
I'm good, no worries.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so that's it for pre-app applications for this evening, um, the other couple items we have are, um, business, um. The first one was something I initiated, the discussion of the North Chestnut Business District applications, um, or really more specifically, the the existing zoning that we have for the North Chestnut Gateway District, I think it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I found a couple of what I think are inconsistencies in it.
Really?
And, um, yeah, really.
Land negotiations.
I I got you shocked, um, so.
I'm sure.
Hold on here a second. Thanks for coming.
There's a quiz on this tomorrow.
We'll mail it to you, yeah, sure.
Probably will be.
All right.
Lot line review.
Yeah, there's a lot of that scenario.
A key phrase.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yep. All right, good night, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Um, so I I fully expect that we're going to see some applications in this district coming in sometime, you know. Sooner rather than later, there's definitely some people talking about those parcels and.
Right.
So, I think it would be a good idea for us to, uh, make sure that the code is, um, as error-free as possible, or inconsistency-free as possible. So I guess, at this point, I'd like to have the conversation with Maurice, but I don't know if anybody had it, did you send around the?
The email?
Yeah, with the code issues that I had put in?
No.
Oh, okay.
From today?
No, it wasn't from today, maybe I I maybe I only sent it to Maurice.
We talked today, I thought you emailed it to everybody, I got it talking.
No, I did send it to everybody, thank you, okay, so you all didn't, did you look at it?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't send today?
No, no, I sent it last week, or a few days ago or something.
I don't really see it.
All right, whatever. Yeah, I I I don't, well, so I'll just give you one example, you guys, you can look at it, um, there's a, in the first section of the of this portion of the code that refers to, describes the, uh, general regu- regulations or whatever for this district. It talks about what's permitted, um, for buildings that are two or more stories in height, and it also then, oh, oh, yeah, right, and then it points out
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
what's permitted if you're building a building of only one story, it's commercial only and so forth.
Right.
But then in another section, it says minimum height requirements.
Yeah.
Two stories or above, um, or whatever exactly.
Yeah, minimum height requirements, two stories, but in one bit it says principal permitted uses and development of one story.
Right, so. Um.
Yeah, so there's a.
So there's a.
Typos, if nothing else.
Well, so there's a, yeah, I think it's more than a typo, I think there's actually a, the fact that, um, you could, in one part of the code, be allowed to build a one-story commercial building, and I don't know if that was intended to take into consideration existing buildings, but not new buildings, but it's not clear.
It's it's needs clarification.
So we need clarification there, um, there, and so there are a few things like that, so, I guess the question for tonight is, should we refer this to our attorney? And have him take a full look at it with this in mind, um, and, or should we discuss it as a full board next, when next needed?
I would feel more comfortable discussing. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it would be kinda nice to be able to set up a couple of scenarios and run them through the code.
It's an interesting idea.
You know, just to see what, look, cause I have a hard time just reading the code.
Right.
And finding that it's.
Uh, yeah, i- if you don't have anything to, that you're.
Right.
Looking to get an answer on.
I mean, essentially, tonight we had three very different applications revolving lot line.
Yep.
It couldn't have been more different.
True.
Um, so to take a, you know, look at the zoning in terms of, you know, what if somebody wants to build a two-story, one-story building?
Mm-hmm. Well, I know at some point, the, uh, building inspectors, uh, both of them being relatively new to the job, they were all gung ho about finding discrepancies and kinda keeping a running tab of what they have, have we ever gotten a copy of what they've discovered so far, I mean.
No, but we should ask.
Yeah, Mark has a huge list.
Yeah.
Of the discrepancies.
No sense reinventing that wheel, you're right.
Exactly.
Have you all?
I mean, if if they've already found where there's.
I don't believe that we received a huge list of discrepancies.
He sent it, it probably, it might have gotten lost in the shuffle, but he sent it to the whole village board a couple of months ago, I could remind him to send it again and copy all your.
Or I'm sure he's added more that he's found in between times.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
And maybe send it to us as well.
Give us a revised one, yeah, I would love to get a copy of that.
Yeah. He also has a, has a great list of, uh, of proposed district regulations as well for two twelve, and how that in and of itself can be revised, I don't know if you guys wanna take a look at that, but somewhat relevant.
Yeah, um.
He really is quite an untapped resource, that guy, always surprising us in in talking.
Yeah.
He's got a great depth of knowledge on it.
Yeah, yeah.
He really is great.
And and if he's already looked up all and found all these discrepancies, why are, you know, it's not worth our while to.
The other big question.
Well, he could refine them.
Re-find them. Why don't why don't we do this, why don't, why don't we ask him specifically for the North Chestnut Gateway District, provide us with a list of of discrepancies that he has seen that apply only to that district, so we can limit this.
Yep. Yeah, the long list might get it.
And then let's let's take a look at it, and then in the meantime, for our next, our next meeting, why don't we all read that section again, so that we're we're familiar with it, so that when we get to the point of talking about it, we can have a reasonably intelligent discussion about it.
Good.
And I'll show him your email, too.
Yeah, um, if there is a, there's a supporting document for all of this, which is the the B three report that was done,
Hmm.
um, and approved by the village board in two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
Can we get a copy of that?
I think it was, uh, it was approved by the board after I was on board, so it had to be.
Okay.
That was already sent out.
Two thousand, either late two thousand thirteen or early two thousand fourteen.
So that document has, um, gives kind of the the framework for.
Right.
For what the code was written, it might be useful for y'all to to peruse that, and.
Can we get a copy of that?
That might help, just in terms of what you're talking about, in terms of scenarios, cause it has, it has.
Oh, yeah. I'm looking for it.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
If you would.
I've heard of it.
Would you send that around again?
Yes.
To everybody, thanks, um, okay, so that will be our, so those are the marching orders for this, so we'll get something from Mark specifically about this portion of section two, of chapter two twelve, um, and everybody can look at these documents, um, two twelve thirteen G. At your home with. So Brogan, when you send the, if you don't mind, just keep everything together, make it easy for people, when you send the report, just send this copy of the code, this section of the code again.
Okay, so I'll hold that for you.
What do you mean, oh, you're gonna do it right now?
Yeah.
Oh, then just forget what I said, just send it right, that's fine, don't don't, that better than send it now.
It's the age of electronics, I'll never get used to it.
Okay, um.
We'll come to our wristwatch.
Planning board, so are we done with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, well, for the question, is?
Yes.
When are we gonna get another planner?
Well, yeah, we we were to interview planners, uh, tomorrow night at six, but there may be a snafu with the, uh, I think it had to do with the timing of an announcement in advance of something, but.
Okay.
Unless you know, do you know?
I know you.
You have no idea.
You started interviewing planners, yes?
Uh, I was not here.
Oh, okay, so you.
For a period of time, but we were, we we're supposed to have, we have a scheduled meeting at six o'clock tomorrow, and a special meeting in advance of the regular scheduled meeting at seven thirty.
Okay, so hopefully soon, good, um, there's a item on our agenda, discussion of planning board training procedures, this was something Maurice put on, I would recommend that we just table this until.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I would remind everybody that, um, by the end of May, we have to have at least four hours of approved training completed and submitted to Brogan, um, verification you actually completed it, um, is, have you finished? I don't need to take a poll, but.
I'm gonna have to do it online, I mean, what have we had, we haven't had anything as a group, have we?
Um, yeah. No.
No, but we're hoping, at least for the ZBA, for, um, either Mark or Rich to do a training, so if that happens during the day, or if
Yeah.
you know, it's four hours long, then that's something that if the village board approves, could be used as training credit, and it's right here, so.
Right. Yeah, I think he was.
And the, um, there's a thing going on at City this weekend, right, on wastewater management?
Yeah, uh.
No, I don't know about that.
Oh, Thursday.
Tomorrow?
Thursday. Thursday.
Tomorrow?
Future of the walkout.
Well, Thursday is future of the walkout, I don't know if that's.
I thought this weekend there was something that was going on, maybe just making Thursday.
I don't know if the future of the walkout is gonna be suitable for.
I don't know, I'm just kidding.
Right.
CE training, I'm not sure.
No, probably not, okay.
Yeah.
But the wastewater, I don't know about, that sounds like it would be.
Sounds good.
Fuck it, wait.
Um.
I don't think there is, I I think I may have something confused.
So I'm not sure what options are left for the next few weeks, um, that are inexpensive or free, um.
Well, you you sent me the the one for, um.
For the form-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zoning, yeah, so there's.
That was great.
So there is a, there is an all-day, uh, workshop at, it's not at Pace University, Land Use Law Center, in, I forget exactly the date, but in early May, I think, um, and it's about form-based zoning, which Maurice had said is a topic that he really would like everybody on the board to become conversant in, um, and he's working with Mike Calamano, the chair of the town planning board, to try to bring some people down here who can provide it, um, this, the the one at Pace is not inexpensive, it's being hosted, um, run by a group called the, something like the Form-Based Zoning Institute or something, this is what they do, um, the registration fee is two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and twenty-five dollars if you register before April twenty-fourth, um, and I think they knock off another twenty-five dollars if three or more people from your organization all choose to register, um. I think it would be great, I realize it's a lot of money, and, uh, so.
May eighth, um.
May eighth.
ABC is a form-based code, presented by the New York State Judicial Institute, Pace Law School.
Yep, so there may be other options, um, I don't know, I think Maurice has been trying to send around emails about stuff when they hear about it, and you do, too, when you hear about them, he did send one, I think, today, but he pointed out it wouldn't actually happen until after
Yeah.
June first, so it wouldn't help for this year.
Yeah.
Um, but it is important, in principle, um, any member who has not completed their training can be removed from the board, so. Is this that one already met mine?
Yeah, I've got.
Good for you.
It's a, it is a New York.
Do you do the online stuff?
You can do online stuff, uh, you just have to do something that is recognized as, um, accepted for CE training, and then you have to submit proof that you did it to to Brogan, so.
So what do you know that's online?
No, I just.
See, that would just say.
I called up to the county, and I said, can I do it online, they said you can do it online.
Yeah, you'd have to find stuff, yeah, they have a, they have a shortlist, I looked at it a few weeks ago, there was nothing yet that was upcoming, um, or things that were current.
Yeah.
New York Planning Federation does some things.
But I mean, they have, if it's online, it's.
I thought it had been online all year long, it's not.
Yeah, no, it's not.
What's the point of having it online?
It's, uh, interactive, uh, webinars or something like that.
Webinars?
Yeah, they're webinars, um, I don't know if this would be doable at this point, but the Land Use Law Center at Pace University put together an entire program for, um, planning board, zoning board members, that you can take this course online, it's, um, a lot of modules, seven or eleven modules, and, what's that?
No, I, that's.
And but 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 it involves doing a certain number of modules, and then, uh, you have to like take a test or something like that, but you also have to like get a sign off from your chair, so it it's a somewhat involved process, if you're interested, I could find out more information, I could give it to Brogan, you can distribute it.
Yeah, it'd be great.
That might.
I think Richie's going on a road trip with us.
Fair enough, so, um, anyway, so, well, if there are other issues that Maurice has in mind, um, and I think he does, we'll reserve that for our next meeting, um. Before we do the minutes, I just wanted to, um, point out a couple of things that Brogan had brought up today, um. One of them, I think, is in our packets, it refers to Local Law Number Two, two thousand and fifteen, and, um, there are some concerns, I guess, within the building department about some of the language in here, in terms of, um, how to interpret or use um, some of the code changes, I don't wanna get into the conversation now about this, but if you would take a look at this, let's, uh, and let's hope, uh, that we can have this on the agenda for our next meeting, um, and the other item that we can talk to the chair about, including for our next meeting, is questions about completeness of applications and pre-applications, um, we're starting to see a lot of pre-applications, it isn't evident that we necessarily need to see these as pre-applications, um, and certainly applicants are encouraged to do pre-applications, but I don't know that the building department should be saying to them that they have to do pre-applications, that was never the intention, um, but I think they're asking, it sounds like the building department and Brogan perhaps are asking for some clarification from us.
Basically, just, yeah, just basically, if you get, um, an application, uh, do you need everything else on the site plan subdivision checklist to be on the site plan that's provided, so with these three applications, it seems like the only thing that the board really requested was a full, uh, complete stamped plan, not necessarily one that shows, um, all the different layers that are required in the checklist, so, since the checklist is in the code, the building department would have to enforce that that checklist is complete in order for the application to be complete, so we're sending it to a pre-app, so the planning board can waive anything that the site, that the checklist, that the applicant would not apply for.
Right.
So, it's a matter of, do we revise the checklist for smaller applications, or?
Right, or create a new one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, or create guidelines that, right, uh-huh, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So, because if, for example, uh, the, one of the lot line alterations provided a full map, and they got everything stamped, and they paid that fee to do that, and then the planning board decided that they needed, I don't know, landscaping or something that wasn't on the plan, then they have to go through that process again, so by providing a small eight and a half by eleven sheet, the planning board can say, okay, you need this, 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 this.
Right.
Now go do it, so.
Good point, okay.
Yeah.
So, so the, so another way to look at it is, as you all know, our code is written for to ensure that larger application, you know, larger projects are are getting the scrutiny that they need, but we don't have any way to manage smaller or minor projects.
Right.
Without getting them caught in the same.
Right.
In that big way, yeah. You're correct, yeah, so, um, so we might, so we could take it from that approach, or we could consider it, um, you know, either way, it's sort of a perspective, um.
But how would we, how would we determine if one qualifies as a smaller one unless we have?
Unless it went to a pre-app.
A pre-app, yeah, you know, um, I guess we got circulated the fact that someone ordered a subdivision five hundred acres, yeah, that would.
Well, if we redefine and had a different checklist for things like, um, a simple subdivision versus a major development, and we had a different checklist created for a lot line adjustment, um, I think that's what they're asking for.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have, right, we don't have, and we no longer have a, or don't have a, a form for a lot line revision.
It's now under subdivision.
It's under subdivision, right, and, and I think.
Yeah.
So, so there's an example, if we, if we created that as a category again, and you could treat those separate from subdivisions.
Yeah.
So you're going to cover that in form-based codes?
I doubt it, but I know nothing about form-based codes.
Yeah, I mean, just having, having a checklist for each specific.
Well, not necessarily for each specific thing, but lot line revision could have applied.
Fairly common.
Yeah, could, could have applied to two of the things that we saw tonight.
Yeah.
And if there was already a set checklist of what's expected of that.
Yeah.
It could have been complete.
It, right, we could have said, yeah, 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 you're out of here.
No, and you could argue that the planning board could, I mean, to give a slightly different example, suppose you have a lot and somebody is proposing to subdivide it into two lots and no more than that. You might say the planning board has the ability to consider that as a minor, depending on the size of the lots we're talking about.
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with acreage.
Yeah, of course.
Size of a lot and.
But, but you might, you might err on the side of saying the planning board has the discretion to consider whether that's major or minor and if it is minor, then here's what, the kinds of things that can be done, you might be able to, you know, or if it's major. But it, yeah, you're not going to, I am, you don't create too many, too many what-ifs, try to cover them all, but I think we're.
Feeding lawyers.
Yeah.
I mean, I would define a minor subdivision as any subdivision that does not extend the village services. There's no roads being created, there's no water, there are sewer lines being run to the property, all pre-exists. So if that was the case, do we really need a two-page checklist?
Well, what if you had, I mean, and this, you can go into the what ifs, but what if you'd already had all those things that they acquired additional land, we're not going to?
Well, if they acquire additional land, it's going to have to run services too, it's a major. As soon as you have to extend the village services, it's a major. But I mean, how many minors can we possibly have in this town? How much infill do we have left?
Yeah, we don't have any majors that we can do, yeah.
We have a couple of lots, I'm no surprise when, when one couple wanted to combine their lot, you know? I mean, I'm an advocate of small lot, small affordable homes, that's why I sat on Habitat for two years. So, you know, this creating big lots in the village, to me, only creates big homes, which makes it more and more unaffordable. But how much, how many more small lots can we even create on infill? We just don't have that much vacant land. So we could define all of our subdivisions as being minor, if we say if it doesn't extend village services, it's a minor subdivision. Then why do you have to do a, you know, a road study and a sewer capacity study and a water capacity study and a, if we're not extending services?
Yes?
I, I'm, it makes sense to me, as, as certainly is a point of departure for a discussion. And I think that it, I can't think of an offhand objection to that. Unless you, you are dealing with the last remaining big piece of property, you know, like a farm, like Jewish farm.
Well, how about if you're dealing with a small piece of property and the person wants to put multi-units on there?
Well, that's different.
That's different.
You might have to extend the services, you know?
But I mean, say, say something exists there and they want it to.
Multi-unit is something different.
Okay.
That would automatically fall under.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think the only reason we took over one and two families as a planning board was that we had problems with Church Street and Mohawk. All of a sudden, there was an influx of two-family things that were running amok because they weren't getting any kind of review that was really community-based.
Yeah.
So all of a sudden, it gets dumped into our laps. Not dumped into our laps, we actually even asked for it. But the problem comes down to is that you then start looking at other single-family lots that exist and figure, how are we going to handle them? We haven't any criteria.
Right, so that's something else we have to.
We have no criteria.
Yeah.
So this would essentially set criteria.
Yeah.
I got a two-page checklist to build one little house on one lot, because that's all we've got.
Well, even for other uses, if you look through all the uses within the code, it, it goes beyond just a one-family. It can be as easy as, you know, I want to build a shed.
Yeah.
Right, so it appears at this point that all of that would need to come in front of us.
Yeah.
So we need to ask if that's reasonable, do we want to be seeing those applications?
Yeah, I get it.
Does that make sense? So, okay. So finally, draft planning board minutes from April 7th.
Unless anybody's got any spelling errors, because look at me, I really see.
I didn't see him. Okay, so I would ask for.
So moved.
Motion to approve the minutes, a second.
Second.
Any conversations, discussions, objections, then all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, anything else from anybody before we go? No, then a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all very much.
You want, you want an anecdote about lot line revision? We live in Buffalo, we live.